Hello, everybody. This is the City of East Hampton Property Committee meeting. Today is July 14th. It is 4:02 PM. We are conducting meetings virtually via platforms such as Zoom in this case due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the governor's emergency order has allowed us to do so. As always, because of the pandemic, remember to be safe. Leave your homes only if necessary, social distance, and wear masks. This is essentially a continuation of a meeting we had last week that, due to some technical difficulties, was interrupted. We were discussing the agenda items on our agenda, specifically the discussion around the discontinuation of Standish Street, as well as a discussion around accepting the moving of the location of the EV chargers for electric vehicles. We do not currently have minutes to approve. I am present, and I see Counselor Kuzinski is present. My understanding is Counselor Rothschild will be joining us. Are there any members of the public here to speak about matters that are not on the agenda? Oh, Counselor Kuzinski, yes.
Before we get into some of the data and the subject matter, I wanted to just reflect briefly on the past meeting. I know that we were Zoom bombed at one point, and the meeting ended, and then it was five or seven minutes later, I came back to the meeting. When I came back to the meeting, the message said this meeting is restricted to invited guests only. And I just wanted to point that out in case no one else had that. That I really feel that if we're going to have Zoom public meetings, we need to have meetings that the public can attend, but just be in a waiting room somewhere and not necessarily in a room where they can just be heard and unmuted at their own discretion. So I wanted to be sure that this meeting, anyone could come in who wasn't specifically an invited guest. Is that the case here?
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you for your input. Yes, the waiting room feature is just a security feature by Zoom, and certainly anyone who comes into the waiting room is let into the meetings, but that-
They can hear the meeting from the waiting room, can't they?
I'm not sure. You were just in the waiting room. No, yeah.
No. Okay. So I just wanted to be clear that we had a spot for somebody where they couldn't necessarily Zoom bomb, but would be able to access hearing and viewing the meeting.
I think basically what we do is we just have people muted, but the waiting room, people get let in.
But if I heard Counselor Kuzinski, I mean, to my knowledge, that meeting didn't continue because I tried several times to get back in, and I couldn't get in either. You know, it's a flaw for sure of a technical difficulty, is kind of what we're calling it. You know, it requires the committee to reschedule and post again with the 48-hour notice. That's the unfortunate part about having that happen. You know, in terms of like the planning board, what they've been doing for public hearings, because it's very important when you have a public hearing, that you continue the public process. So someone who attends the first hearing, they're only noticed after that is whenever it's continued to. So for the planning board example, the chair has been at the very, very beginning, just saying that if there is any technical difficulties, it's automatically going to get continued. And then we establish a future date, so that someone who gets cut off, you know, they'll have, will have at least accomplished the continuation date. So it's been challenging. Yeah. But I did try to get back in, and I couldn't get back into that meeting either. I don't think anyone had any other discussions after that.
Just to clarify, Jeff, we did come back in afterwards and had a brief discussion, but then unfortunately, there was another meeting scheduled on top of us, and we all got booted.
Okay. So I eat my words then.
But it's a point well taken, and these are all hurdles. Hi, Counselor Rothschild. These are all hurdles that we are, you know, certainly navigating in the world of Zoom and COVID, and trying to figure out how to best use these platforms. They're not perfect, and, you know, maintain transparency and follow up in meeting laws despite-
We're meeting again before this matter is brought forth, before the full council. The public had an opportunity to come to this meeting to discuss the same subject matter, I presume. So that's important, I think, for the record.
Correct. And this was, this is a publicly posted meeting. It was filed through the clerk and posted as any other public meeting would be posted.
Excellent. Thank you for us covering the matter.
So let's get to it. We were finishing, I'd like to start with Standish Street because we were finishing that up. And I don't think Attorney Abel is here. I didn't receive any follow-up questions, and I believe at the end of the last meeting, we were kind of wrapping things up and trying to make a decision as a committee whether to move forward and vote yea or nay regarding the discontinuation of Standish Street. I'll open it up to members of the committee. Counselor Kuzinski, do you have any input?
I originally wanted to be sure that all the neighbors had an opportunity to raise any objections and to be involved in the process. To my knowledge, I think that process has been accomplished. One of the neighbors who is one of the abutters, I spoke to actually a couple of close neighbors already. So I think we're good on that level. I did have a question regarding the layout of the street and how it's described in the proposed motion. And I'm glad City Planner Bag is here. I don't know if you have the map in front of you. There were, there was the, I believe, a 1908 layout or design, and then there was like, I'm not sure of the dates, but there were two early maps, and like a 1930s map. Jeff, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. I don't have, I don't have the map with me. Again, this is not initiated by me, but I, Owen, do you have anything available?
Yep.
What is the question about the layout of the street?
The issue is the way it's, the way it's, oh, great, thank, that's not, go keep going, keep going.
You're looking for that like rough drawing?
Well, that one on the end. If you look closely, well-
Is it this?
If you look at the next one up, let me see if that one kind of describes it. You see where Standish Street intersects with Plymouth Ave?
Let me see.
You're on it. You were, that was right on the map, on the previous map that you had up. Thank you.
I did?
Yep, right at the top on the left-hand corner.
All right.
Standish Street. And the way it lays out in that map, it looks like the Standish Street extends all the way to the property line, which we call Plymouth Avenue. Lot number 27. I don't know if you can see that, Jeff?
Yeah, I can see that, yeah.
So it looks like that's Standish Street, and Plymouth Avenue is, ends at Standish Street. And when we look at that map, and that was the original layout of the properties. So I think that's a bit confusing. I was hoping that the attorney could present a map of the, or describe the discontinuation other than to just say, just discontinue Standish Street, but to describe it as somehow intersecting. And then it's clear that Plymouth Avenue extends all the way to the end, where that dashes for Standish Street.
Yeah. Owen, can you, can you describe, can you scroll up to that first GIS map?
Yes.
Right. So, yeah, so actually JP, you know, that, what, if, I don't know if we want to belabor this. If we want to look one more, one more document would be the survey. So, so the surveyor for the developer, when they're proposing the development of the lots, the survey actually depicts it much clearer, much more clearly, where it defines on that map that's showing now, it shows the boundaries of Plymouth Ave as being distinct from the property and separate from what Standish Street is labeled as. So I don't know that was very clear. If you bear with me, if it's helpful to see if we can clarify it here.
I think the, I think when, if you really look closely at the lines and the number of feet, Plymouth Avenue is the paved area that's Plymouth Avenue.
Yeah.
If you, if you look at the dimensions on the map, but if you just look at the map, it's a little confusing. Anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'm happy to proceed in whatever way you think may be appropriate.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Counselor Rothschild, any input?
No, I felt pretty satisfied after our last conversation with the attorney. Really. So.
Thank you.
No more questions.
Thank you very much. And then also just to comment, I think one of the kind of issues in the mix here is that there's a question as to whether the street ever was really legally brought into being in the first place, as demonstrated in the minutes that we had from the early 1900s. There was a vote, but as Attorney Abel explained, the rest of the normal process to actually legally create the street never happened. So there was a vote, there was, it was created on paper maps, but all the other GL and planning, et cetera, never happened. So there, and I think that that was one of his potential routes to go, is just to establish legally that the street really never existed appropriately as, in accordance to mass general law. So, but regardless, I just, I just wanted to kind of make sure that that was reflected in the record. So if there's-
I think, I think, you know, that you summarized the fact that it appears that Attorney Abel says that the street acceptance wasn't, the street was accepted, but it wasn't, no fee interest was taken by the city, and there were some other steps that may have not have occurred. I think if you look at it and use the same logic, however, you'll find that that wasn't the only street that was accepted at the time. What was accepted was Colonial, Holden, and Plymouth. And I'm, I wonder if there's any other further documentation of there being a fee for the city in those streets. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. One more time, Planner Bag, do you have any other comments about this agenda item?
Well, I just have a question. So before the meeting ended, what I, what I heard as a process was that to follow the discontinuance process, if, you know, or it's, you know, we're trying to run parallel to an acceptance process as well, like we're trying to fit this into the next closest thing we can find, that the planning board and other city officials would also provide the city council with some input. So the planning board has not, even though the planning board handled the special permit, you know, they weren't, at that time, they weren't asked to review the discontinuance. And I think we would potentially have the, the acting DPW director potentially, you know, able to review this and provide the, what we expect him to say is that the city has absolutely no interest in ever developing the street. So with those two things in mind, what I wasn't sure about was not necessarily pushing for the vote tomorrow, but maybe the August 5th meeting, because I think that, I believe that I, I could put this on the agenda of the planning board next week, so that they could review it formally and give their formal review comments to the city council for that next meeting. So I just didn't know if you had talked about that step.
We did. I think the workflow that we agreed on, at least tentatively, was to vote in this committee. If that vote was in the affirmative, to bring it to the council, and then tomorrow, what the, tomorrow, the council would vote to send it to the planning board, and then the planning board would discuss and vote, bring it back to the council, and the council would vote on a final vote in regards to the discontinuance.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. Yep, I think that's good. I just wanted to make sure that was the, yeah, I didn't hear that discussion, so that's good.
It was a very confusing meeting last, last week. Lots of balls in the air. So without any further, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion if it so moves anybody.
Resolution to discontinue regarding the discontinuous of Standish Street as a public way in East Hampton.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Kuzinski and a second by Counselor Rothschild. Any further discussion? Without any further discussion, I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kuzinski?
Aye.
Counselor Rothschild?
Aye.
And I am also voting aye. So we have, the vote is three-nothing on motion by Counselor Kuzinski, seconded by Counselor Rothschild to discontinue Standish Street as a public way, and we will bring this to the council for a vote to send to the planning board tomorrow. Okay, moving on, our next agenda item is, let me find, so discussion about, we, we have the letter here, last July, we had authorized the mayor to enter into a site agreement with Eversource regarding placement of EV charging stations, and particularly behind the Mills, there was plan for a station there, but, and I'll turn the floor over to Planner Bag in a second, but it sounds like that it was not going, they weren't going to work out there for a variety of reasons, and there is a new proposal to place these off of Lovefield Street. So Planner Bag, you comment on this discussion?
Sure, thank you. Yep. We, last year, so it's amazingly about one year ago, even last July, we brought this project to city council for authorization. So the mayor, you know, we asked for city council to authorize the mayor to finalize these agreements. In the following documents, you'll see that the site, there's a site host and a site license agreement that we, we sign on to with Eversource. And why we want to do that is because through Eversource's program, they pay for the costs of all the infrastructure to run electrical lines and some equipment underground, and they pop up at the locations of these EV chargers. And we, we had secured two different grant sources to actually pay for the chargers. So this, you know, the phrase that the mayor likes to use a lot is called stacking grants, and this is a really good example. We successfully did this at 50-Pason, although we're just in this little bit of back and forth with so much going on, it's kind of difficult to get some things moving during, during COVID. So we haven't sort of unveiled the EV chargers at 50-Pason yet, but they should be available soon, but they've been installed, which is the key component that we were really working for. So that process worked well. And then behind the Mills, Eversource had asked a lot of questions about, in their, in their research before authorizing their end, you know, the former use as Mills, you know, there are some soil contamination issues back there. And the records, the way the records show for them is somewhere behind the Mills, there could be soil contamination. And so they were asking us to, to do soil investigations in the area that we were looking to do the chargers, and it falls outside of any, anything that they would pay for. And we were, after kind of going back and forth, we were really not in a position to fund additional soil exploration. So we really kind of started to look around, where else could we put the chargers? And in doing that, the delay actually really helped us to be able to move the chargers to the Mass Works project that we have under construction now. And why this is important for the, for this committee and the council to be trying to resolve tomorrow is that we have an opportunity for the, the underground infrastructure to go in next week, is when the contractor would actually be poised to put all the utilities underground, and then as they're getting ready to put the base coat of paving, we would have accomplished kind of getting that infrastructure in. So, you know, that's what we're trying to do, is just kind of keep the city council in the loop and ask for the authorization to change the location from behind the Mills to, to this new project here. I do have another map, but it's not necessarily, necessary for me to fill it all out, pull it up, but, you know, we highlighted the red box. The, the area that we're looking at is the first four parking spaces. So similar to 50-Pason, that we have two EV chargers, and each one has two ports. So one charger can charge two cars, and then the other charger can charge two more cars. So Eversource is going to cover the costs for our, our current contractor to do the work. And they're going to pull power on the page, if you go left down Lovefield, and you see that first crosswalk, there's a utility pole in that vicinity, and they're gonna go underground, yeah, right there, they're gonna go underground from that pole, and then they're gonna go to the right underground with utilities. And it's a really good opportunity. So now we're actually blending this with a, we're gonna have this brand-new, you know, parking area funded by Mass Works. We're gonna have the utilities underground funded by Eversource, and then we're gonna have the EV chargers that were funded by Environmental Protection. So, and, if we didn't hit those hurdles with, behind, you know, behind the Mills, we didn't think we had this opportunity, but the Eversource gave us an extension, we could work in this project. So from my understanding, the discussions with Eversource is the site host agreement and the site, the site license, the language will essentially be the same, except the location is gonna change, and then the exhibit is gonna be a slightly more updated map than we have here.
I'll turn it over to the other counselors a second. I just have a couple of questions, Jeff.
Yep.
Does this, does this plan involve new conduits for which we would need easements? Do we already have an Eversource easement?
We do not believe that they, no, we don't believe that any additional easement is gonna be necessary, because the way Eversource is working this program is the site license and the site host agreement. So there was language earlier, I think, I think in the packet that we sent along last July, I could dig it up if it's important, they wanted to make the process easier. So for the EV chargers, they, they basically took out any easement requirements and did the site license and site host agreements instead. So it's an easier thing for municipalities to do. So hopefully I answered your question, yeah. We don't need easements, we need those two, we need the two, the site agreements and the site license.
And were there other locations that were considered?
Last year, when we were doing the assessments, we looked at all city-owned parking lots, and the only other one that we, we spent some time looking at was the Cottage Street Lot, across the street from the Majestic Theater. But the, the conclusion was that it's a very small parking lot, and to take four spaces for EV chargers there, didn't seem like it was the best choice. That helped us focus on 50-Pason. So like, 50-Pason has 97 parking spaces, and to take four for EV, there's, there's plenty there. And then with this one, this was the, behind the Mills was the next candidate that we really wanted. We looked at, we looked at Mill Side Park, but there were some issues and concerns that we, we didn't want to take up some of those spaces. Parks and Rec was, was a little bit reluctant to have those spaces taken out. So we looked at behind the Mills, and then when that didn't work, this, this candidate, we wanted to do this initially, but the timing wasn't gonna work, and then Eversource gave us the extension.
Okay.
I don't know if there's other, I mean, this is a program that we, we're not sure if Eversource will continue, but the conversation that we did have was that these, the conduits that we'll put, that we will put in have expansion ability. So the conversation that we had about 50-Pason is that we could potentially expand the number of EV chargers at 50-Pason, and given the number of spaces, that would be the most viable place. Whereas here, we want to contain it to four, and we think that these spaces will be the least utilized. As you get closer to the roundabout, you'll be a little bit closer to the rail trail, and we think people will park there to access the rail trail, these last four spaces that we thought would be underutilized.
Okay. Counselor Rothschild, any questions?
I had the same question you did about others, considering other spots. It's just since that building isn't built out yet, and I was kind of imagining that there's gonna be like housing there, that might be higher-income housing, I just didn't know if it was the most democratic place to put the, the chargers. Just, that was just a thought that occurred to me. It's not like a fully thought-out thought, but I like that there are 50-Pason too. I get the whole idea of stacking grants, I think it's really smart. I see with the accessing of the bike path, that those are, you know, you know, a lot of different people will be using it. So I just wanted to voice that that was my only thought about it, but I'm, obviously, it sounds like a plan that makes sense, and it's been well thought out. That's it.
Thank you. I think it's a very thoughtful comment about the placement and the kind of demographics of the area. Counselor Kuzinski, any, any thoughts or questions?
Just a couple. In terms of the chargers themselves, they're credit card operated, isn't that correct for your charge? You pay for the, for the, for the fill-up?
Yes. Yep. And where we haven't finished the process, because 50-Pason, you know, everything happened really fast after COVID, kind of, the construction was allowed for COVID, so they got installed, and we didn't want to stop them. They are paid to charge, and that's what the finance director is still trying to figure out what rate to set so that it covers the costs. So the city, yeah, the city's looking to cover the cost of electricity, and there are annual software charges that the city would have to pay for. So the rates, and this is what most municipalities are doing, is setting the rates just enough to cover the cost to run it. And we're not looking, the, the conversation was to not try to generate a revenue from these, but just enough to cover the cost, so.
Except, I think, that the, the cost could be considered as the future replacement of the item, or any repairs to the item, since I presume the grant doesn't cover those factors. If you could mention that to whoever is setting the rate.
Yeah.
That there is some future taken into consideration. The other question I had was, there are four spaces now, is the infrastructure expandable?
Right. I did-
So that the, whatever you put in the ground, hey, we need eight here, not four. So just hook up to the existing wires that we're putting in.
Yep. They, that's, Eversource was clear that they, they do have expandability. I think both locations can be expanded. It, it will take time to figure out if there's enough need or desire to expand them.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep. We do think that 50, so just to capture that, I think, the conversations in terms of green communities, which is the other, the other funding source that we use, Green Communities does encourage and fund the creation of fleets. So if you talk about, you know, city government vehicles, that it's kind of ironic now when we're, we're having budget issues, but in the future, the idea of several, you know, city-owned vehicles being EV chargers, then, then you would want to expand this, and then they support the funding to create fleets. So 50-Pason is definitely the ideal candidate for expansion. If, if this became very popular here on Lovefield, we do have the expandability. So yeah, I think that's a key component for Eversource.
Thank you. No other questions.
Jeff, I have two more questions, and one of them is piggybacking off of something that Doc, that Doctor, that Counselor Kuzinski raised, and it may be out of the scope of the specificity of the item, but are there, what kind of service agreements are there on these? In other words, when these are put in, you know, Counselor Kuzinski, you're off the very valid point about potentially having to service these stations, is Eversource responsible for that? Is there a warranty of some sort? Do we have like X amount of years of service?
Just, I might want to do a little brushing up before maybe tomorrow night, but, you know, just, I think the key thing is that Eversource in this, in this situation is taking responsibility for the underground utilities. So, so, you know, they will maintain that element, and then they will bring the conduits up above ground, and then we have a different, you know, then we put the chargers on top. So we, we have a different- a different, you know, then we put the chargers on top. So we, we have a different contract with the vendors for the chargers themselves. So, um, I think, I, I've heard the questions about sort of service repairs and upgrades and kind of maintenance of the actual, you know, what we're really talking about is the charging units themselves. You know, usually the underground infrastructure, you know, is viable for many, many years. So um, I think the question I'll be asking to the finance director is just to confirm, which she's, she, as the, as a finance person, I'm sure thinks about this, that the rate should be set high enough to build a fund for future maintenance purposes. And I think that that's, if I heard correctly, that's, that's the question I need to ask and just kind of confirm that we're gonna set the rates correctly, that we can fund the maintenance of these.
Okay. And then the other one, you know, one complaint about this technology in general is that potentially you're using fossil fuels to provide the electricity to these electronic charging stations for, for emission-free vehicles or low emission vehicles. I, I don't know, without getting into the specific source here, is there, do you know with this, with the units themselves, if there's any capacity to expand them in such a way where, where they have a, a solar component or a solar storage component that you could attach to it so that we can be as, um, emission-free as possible and, and have potentially sustainable, known sustainable energies that are, that are powering these units?
I guess.
I know it's a big question.
Well, it's a good question. I mean, but to be candid and to be honest, I don't think these units, the four, that we're installing for, it's the city's first. Um, these will be the second set, but the city doesn't have any other EV chargers anywhere. To my knowledge, the units that we purchased or that we signed up to purchase don't prob, they probably, they probably do not have solar adaptability component. It just wasn't, you know, the, both Green Communities and the Mass DEP were, you, they were only funding that, you know, and to be clear, the planning department has, um, zoning incentive funds that we often use to match grants. So we are paying some, some amount for each of the chargers. So the incentives offered by Green Communities and by Mass DEP doesn't, did not cover the entire cost of the charger unit itself. So we are incurring some costs to, to bring this to East Hampton, but the way that, uh, the zoning incentive funds are being used out of my office is if we can leverage. So I think Evers, uh, sorry, excuse me, Mass EV is giving us, um, $12,000 towards the cost of the units and we're paying $4,000, um, to, to finish the, to pay for the cost of the chargers. But in totality, the, the use of $4,000 of city funds leverages all of the Eversource infrastructure costs and the $12,000 from the grant. Very long-winded way to say that that's, should be a future goal, um, to figure out how better to integrate the solar component. Um, it definitely was outside of these discussions. And I think anecdotally, I, I, I think that, um, River Valley Co-op will be sort of the city's first. I think, you know, when they're building the building now and then they're gonna build, they're building a carport, solar canopies. And I believe that those are gonna be powered by the solar arrays. So we could potentially learn from, from what River Valley Co-op is doing and how they structure that.
Great. Thank you. Um, any other, there's no members of the public here, uh, so otherwise I would open it up to any comments from the public. Any other comments for the counselors? All right. Seeing none, um, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to this matter? And I believe that the motion specifically would be, what, Jeff, to authorize the mayor to enter a site license agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say, if you go all the way to the last page of this, um, packet, keep going, that's the agreement. But then on the very last page was the motion and the vote from last year.
Okay.
Barbara did ask me for the motion language for, for tomorrow. And I was looking at it before the meeting, um, right here. So it'll be basically this motion is what city council will do tomorrow.
Okay, we would just have to change, we would eliminate, in, in this language, though, we would eliminate Payson Avenue. We would change that, that last part where it says 50 Payson and city-owned parking behind Pleasant Street Mills and replace that with, um.
The Lovefield parking lot. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any comments at all, seeing this information? Uh, seeing none, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move that, uh, we recommend that the city council authorize the mayor or her designated to enter any, in all agreements to execute, uh, relative to Eversource site license agreement and site host agreements with respect installation of EV chargers associated with the property off Lovefield Street. As it may be necessary on behalf of the city to affect the foregoing.
Thank you as a motion.
Second.
From, uh, from Counselor Rothschild. Any other, any further discussion? Okay.
Say thank you. I, I, I look forward to this moving forward.
Hi, thank you as well. It's good. It's, this is a great project. So I appreciate your time, uh, helping change the location.
Uh, so I'll take a roll call vote again. Counselor Rothschild?
Yes, aye.
Counselor Kuzinski?
Aye.
And for myself, I will be aye as well. So motion passes three, zero on motion by Counselor Kuzinski, seconded by Counselor Rothschild, uh, to allow the mayor to, or designate to enter into a site license agreement for EV chargers, uh, off of Lovefield Street. And that is it for our agenda. Uh, I wanted to thank everyone again for being so flexible with, uh, getting this meeting scheduled, uh, right before the, the tomorrow's council meeting. And also I think for weathering the Zoom storm of last week and kind of managing to, to clear those hurdles and make it through the meeting before being abruptly cut off. So thank you, everyone. I'm happy to take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting. Uh, I will take a roll, roll call vote. Counselor Kuzinski?
Aye.
Counselor Rothschild?
Aye.
And I am also a yes to adjourn. So thank you, everybody. And I will see you, Jeff, I'll see you later.
Yeah.
And have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.